This is Eric Kettig, seconded.
Excellent.
We all voted in favor.
Okay.
Shocking.
Great.
But at this point, we turn it over for the budget here, correct?
Well, yes. You could do the pledge before if you want.
I'll just call this main boarder and say to the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So at this point, turn it over for the, Vinsky, for the public hearing on our 2021-22 school budget.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, and good evening. Tonight, we will open with a budget hearing for the 21-22 school year. And this is the opportunity for us to review all of the work and the decisions that the board has made in developing the budget that has been adopted to propose to the voters. Do you want to use the microphone? Is it on? Can I just touch this thing?
Okay.
So this is the opportunity that we have to present the adopted budget to the community, answer any questions that anyone might have, and talk about the decisions that have been made that went into the budget development, as well as the vote information that we'll present to the public on May 18. So tonight, we'll review the Amherst CSD mission, which is what guides all of our decisions. We'll go over the 21-22 budget. We'll talk a little bit about the tax rates for next year. We'll review what a contingency budget might look like, and then discuss the details for voting. So our mission, really, the first six words are what I want to highlight tonight, to prepare all students to excel. And that hasn't been more important in any year than it has been this year. And next year's budget and the work that we did in the budget development supports that. There are social-emotional needs for our students, learning needs, and this budget addresses all of those. First, let's talk about our revenue budget. Our property tax levy is a tax cap compliant levy increase of 3.14%. Our tax-based growth factor increased less, or about half a percent, which is very minimal. And CPI this year was 1.23%. We have a level of exclusions of about $1.7 million, which are allowed to be added to the levy. And that is the difference between our debt payments and any aid that we'll be receiving to offset those payments. State aid was a change for us this year. Our state projected state aid is just under $19 million, which was a $1.7 million increase in foundation aid. That increase allowed us to close our gap and reduce our reliance on fund balance and reserves, while maintaining all of our programming and supports for our students and staff. Current legislation that's for this year states that over the next two to three years, foundation aid will be fully phased in. For Amherst, it's very significant because our foundation aid is less than 70% of what would be entitled to us if we were fully phased in. If that legislation remains in place, we'll receive $4.8 million over the next few years on top of the $1.7 we received this year. Federally, the stimulus funds have also been a large topic of conversation this year. Amherst has two different categories we'll be receiving stimulus dollars in. CRRSA, or CHRSA, it's been nicknamed, is about $2.8 million. And ARPA, which is the American Recovery Plan, is $3.1 million. And those funds are going to be used to close learning gaps and help offset pandemic-related expenses over the next two to three years. Those dollars are federal dollars and are not part of our general fund budget. Every year, we use transfers from our reserves to help balance our budget. We've been able to reduce the reliance of those transfers this year to a total of 92,000, which is fully offset by expenditure lines in our budget. $60,000 from our tax surcharge reserve and $32,000 from our unemployment reserve. Our fund balance allocation is strictly limited to an equal expenditure. So we have a contingency line of $806,000 that we fully fund with fund balance. That line is meant for unplanned expenditures or expenses needed that might come up next year to help close learning gaps or additional pandemic-related expenses. We fund that with fund balance so that we're not negatively affecting our tax levy. This year, because of our increase in state aid, foundation aid, we did not need additional fund balance or reserves to close our gap. Previously, in our current year, we had about $1.5 million in total fund balance and reserves allocated to balance our budget. And going into next year, we'll have just under 900,000. Overall, we have a revenue budget of $64.3 million, which is an increase of 3.03%. On the expenditure side, we're seeing an increase in personnel and benefits. Our personnel's increase in about 1.9%, or by $166,000. And that's based on our contractual obligations. ERS and TRS are each going up a little bit based on our projected rates. Health insurance is actually projected to decrease in our budget. Our plan has been performing very well due to some negotiating with some pharmacies and our plan benefit administrators. So we will actually see a reduction there, about 200,000. And our workers' comp is increasing about 24,000 due to our experience rating over the past three years. General support and instruction are both seeing minor increases. General support is seeing a small increase in our liability insurance line, as well as a small increase in postage. That line had been held flat for a couple of years, so now we're just bumping it up a little bit. We will continue our capital outlay project that we do annually. It's $100,000 worth of work in our buildings. And the contingency line, offset by fund balance, will be a total of 806,000 this year. Typically, we keep that line at about 500,000. But this year, because of the pandemic and the unknowns for next year, we included our retirement breakage of 306,000 in that line, again, fully funded by fund balance, so it's not negatively affecting our tax levy. On the instruction side, we have some increases for charter school tuition, our grant writer contracts, some special education tuition increases and services that are needed for our students, and a small transfer in our athletic budget from our transportation budget. BOSIS has a more significant increase this year of just over 13%, but that was expected. We have a plan for long-range rollover of our technology. So we will be entering the second year for our instructional purchase agreement, or our IPAs, which helps keep our technology current. We have a BOSIS capital project payment coming up in the first year in July. That will be budget neutral, as we have made some transfers within our budget. And we'll be receiving BOSIS aid on that payment in the same fiscal year of the following June. Transportation has a 1.5% increase, which is the second year of our two-year agreement. So next year, we will be embarking on the transportation bid. So we'll go out and see what our contract results are moving forward into the next few years. And then our debt service for lower group projects is increasing about 4%. We have lots of staffing changes, and they're all based on student needs, but no programs are being cut. We will have a reduction of two L assignments, two L sixth assignments. So our teachers teach five periods a day, and sometimes there's additional supports needed, so they have a sixth assignment. While we're reducing those two assignments, it's because we're adding a full-time L teacher, which will provide additional supports for our students. We're also adding a sixth assignment for technology. The capital project work in the high school will be almost finished, and we're looking forward to increasing support in that area as students begin to use the new wing. We will be reducing two physical education teacher assistants, but we'll be replacing those two positions with a full-time ED and health teacher. We'll have an additional two teacher assistants with a second hire for a physical education and health teacher. We had communications support three days a week through BOSIS, and we've increased that to a full-time position in district. We're reducing two CODA positions and replacing them with two full-time occupational therapists and adding an ELA assignment in the high school to support the needs of some specific students in that area. Overall, all of these staffing changes net to an increase to the budget of approximately $152,000. On the other side, we have some retirements, which netted a savings of about $458,000. And together with the staffing changes and career changes that we've made, along with the retirements, is where that additional $306,000 came from as a savings that we decided to keep in the budget and put in the contingency line. Overall, we have an expenditure budget of $64.3 billion, 3.03% increase, which results in a balanced budget. Part of the budget hearing, districts are required to present the adopted budget in two different formats, a tripartite budget and a component budget. The tripartite budget breaks the expenses down into three categories, administrative, capital, and program. And the component budget takes those same numbers and breaks it down a little bit further in five categories: general support, instruction, transportation, employee benefits, and debt and transfers. Our goal is always to focus as many dollars as we can to our instructional program or our program line on the tripartite budget, because those are the dollars that directly affect our students. And as you can see, in a tripartite budget, we have 75% of our budget going towards program. And on the component budget, over 55% of our budget goes towards instruction. One of the lines in our budget that we mentioned previously is our continuation of our capital outlay. So every year, districts are allowed to include one line in the budget of maximum $100,000. We can identify work that's needed in the buildings for a small project, and we receive building aid on those expenditures in the following year. So last year, while we approved the $100,000 project, we didn't embark on it because we didn't know what our budget was going to look like. Now that we're nearing the end of the year, we know that we can move forward with that project, and we will be replacing broken sidewalks and doing a little bit of building work at Wyndhamir. On the same token, the funds for next year, the project for next year, will do that same work, but only at small drive. We do have that information in the newsletter, along with some pictures of the sidewalks. So everyone will know exactly why we chose that. In the past, we've done projects such as the middle school emergency generator, the district office best fuel, the elevators at both elementary schools. By continuing to do that work every year, we receive the building aid in the following year, which doesn't have a significant impact on our budget. So overall, we have a balanced budget. Moving forward into the next two years, we do see that we do have projected gaps. But depending on what happens with fund balance and with our budget plans for next year, we'll look to get those reduced moving forward. Typically, at this time, we're able to give an estimate on what we expect our property tax rates to look like. Unfortunately, this year, we have not received updated assessment values yet from the town of Amherst. So when we use the formula, we show an increase, exactly what our levy would be, because we're using Lester's assessment, so that makes sense and is logical. If our assessment value comes in higher, then that rate will go down because we'll have more assessment value to divide that tax levy into. And if for some reason the value of the town were to decrease, then you'd see that rate go up a little bit. Typically, it does go up. We don't typically expect it to go down, but, you know, we don't have that information yet. So the information that's in the newsletter is this, because it went to print before we got the information. But even with the projected rates that we would normally have right now, rates are not truly finalized until August, when the final rules are received, and then it comes board action at that time. Contingency budget is another item that we'll talk about during our hearing. And that is so that our voters know what would happen in the event that our budget doesn't pass. A contingency budget can automatically be adopted by the board in the event of a failed vote, or the board can make the choice to go out for a revote, either the same budget or a changed budget. If the budget were to fail a second time, then we would have no choice but to adopt a contingent budget. Contingent budgets have a few more restrictions than our regular budget does. We would have no ability to increase our tax levy, so it would stay at the current year level. Members of the community and different organizations do not have the ability to use our facilities indoor or outdoor without paying the full cost of those facilities. We cannot purchase any equipment. Any non-unionized employees cannot receive raises. And we can't make any capital expenditures outside of an emergency situation. If we were going to move forward with a contingent budget, then we'd have a tax levy increase of 0% and we would have a decrease in spending of just over $510,000. So our budget-to-budget increase would be about $1.3, almost $1.4 million, which would be a 2.21% increase instead of a 3.03%. And we would look to close that gap with additional fund balance and reserves. So what are we asking our voters to consider this year? We will put forth a budget of $64.316 million, which is a cap-compliant tax levy increase of 3.14%. Proposition two is the establishment of a new capital reserve. It has a $10 million maximum funding level and a 10-year maximum funding account. So the important thing to know is we're not proposing to put $10 million anywhere right now. This is just the establishment of the reserve. So if in the event, at the end of the year, there are funds available, the board can then make the decision to move funds into that reserve. And those dollars are then used when we have a future capital project to help offset the low share for taxpayers. We have three board of education seats up this year, and we have three candidates running through the board, Mr. Steinle, Ms. Berns, and Ms. Arrington. So every year, we try to summarize our budget so that we know exactly what we're asking our voters to consider and what we're trying to accomplish. This budget focuses on the health and safety of our staffed students and supports the emotional, social, and academic needs of all of our students, which is more important this year than I think it ever has been. All programs, athletics, and extracurricular programs remain. Nothing was produced or cut. The state's foundation aid increase allowed us to close our gap and reduce our reliance on fund balance and reserves, which helps us in long-range planning, because once that money is spent, it's gone. Our federal stimulus dollars are about $6 million. Each for Amherst specifically to be used over the next several years, which will help us increase our programming for students to help close learning gaps and offset pandemic-related expenses, either from this year or future years. Our tax levy is compliant with 3.14% increase. And a passed budget allows us to continue to allow the community to use our facilities. The vote is Tuesday, May 18, in this building, in South Gymnasium. All day, 7:00 AM tonight, we will be following COVID protocols. So there will be hand sanitizer. People will be physically distanced, with everything we can to help ensure safety. And we will be asking our voters to cast their vote on the maximum spending limit of the budget, the establishment of capital reserve, and three seats to the board. Does anybody have any questions? You know, our board has heard this a lot, because they've been on here every step of the way. But this is the opportunity that we can take questions from the community or answer any questions in an open session.
All right. Do we expect next year to allow community usage of our buildings and facilities? Or is that still up in the air?
Well, we allow it this year.
Mrs. Vizinsky, could you repeat the question?
Oh, yeah.
Nobody can hear a thing.
The question was if we expect to be allowing the community to use our facilities, because it was limited this year. So we did allow our community to use our facilities, not in an organized fashion, but people were allowed to use the track. We did have things closed when it was mandated to be closed, but once we were allowed to open it, we did. We have appropriate signage outside for mask-wearing, social distancing. We're using the facility for sporting events where spectators are allowed. So as long as COVID protocols allow, we'll be able to continue to keep things open for our community to use recreationally. If we get to the point where we're allowed to have building permits again, you know, we'll be able to do that and not have restrictions as we would if we were on a continued budget. All right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. I will take back control of the meeting here. The, we did have no communication. Mrs. Custodi, do we have any visitors listening to this meeting, sign up?
No.
Okay. Perfect. We do record a board and committees. I know we have one on the agenda here, Mrs. Arrington.
Yeah. We had a policy meeting last Wednesday. Basically, all the policies had to do with harassment. And there weren't major changes. Amherst is maintaining its commitment to harassment-free space. All the languages changed. People are consistent throughout the policies. And then in ease of recording. And then they added in elements of online, with all the Zoom calls that have been going on. They had to make sure that was added to the policies.
And that is on our agenda for approval tonight, then, obviously.
Okay.
Great.
One was new, and so we only have the first reading, I think, correct? And the rest are approved.
Do we have any other updates?
I encourage the CSD legislative meeting virtually. Really, two major areas of conversation. One, to validate what was just said. A lot of discussion in various districts, which is what I'm catching up on this debate. You know, everybody's behind. We're just more and more, we're just staying behind. So there's celebratory about all we've done and through our commitment to get people caught up. And then, pretty much, the calendar for next year, what's virtual, what's live, what are we moving, what are we pushing back? So maybe we'll keep it open after a while.
Great. Anyone else? All right. Now we will turn it over to the superintendent's report.
Well, I'm so glad we're able to meet in this different venue. You can see one of our mitigation strategies at work here, which is increased airflow and filtration with our HVAC system. So I'm happy to welcome Mr. Wheaton and Dr. Otto for an update on health, phys ed, and athletics. So I've asked Dr. Otto to co-present with Mr. Wheaton, because, as you know, in our budget, we are authorizing the increase in health and physical education staff. And I was asked them to provide you with an update on how that staff will be used next year to address our students' needs.
Welcome. I'll have Dr. Otto come up in a moment. I'm going to talk through the physical education piece first. And then Dr. Otto will come up, and we'll talk together as we talk about the health ed piece. So again, thank you. Can you hear me okay? If I don't, no, it's really tough back there, isn't it? All right.
We got it. Lots of airflow.
I know.
You're like Jeopardy host tonight, so just take the mic.
Well, thank you very much for this little round there. Okay. Thank you for having me here tonight. I know last year, we didn't get this opportunity to have this presentation. So I appreciate all of your support as we've gone through this school year, last school year as well. I didn't get to formally thank you for last school year, the opportunity to serve as director of health, physical education, and athletics for such a prestigious school district. So again, thank you for all of your support as we move forward here. But I do have some updates for you tonight relative to health, physical education, and athletics. And really, that's the goal or the objective, is to update you, but to also think forward in where are we going within the district, within this program. Okay. So speaking first about physical education from a K-12 perspective, I'm just going to update you or give you a good overview of what our health and physical education teachers have been doing throughout the school year. Really, the focus has been on wellness. And you'll see that in our New York State Learning Standards here in just a moment, some of the new standards that were developed for implementation starting on this year. But obviously, the pandemic has changed things quite a bit. Our phys ed teachers have done an outstanding, tremendous job of providing outstanding opportunities for our kids in the realm of physical education. So just some photos for you here. I think visuals are always good. Focusing on personal and social opportunities with our students within class, K-12 physical education. Picture to my left is Patty Blair, Ms. Blair, over at Wyndhamir. Obviously, just getting a little fresh air. Our phys ed teachers have been trying to get outside as much as possible. We know that's the safest environment. So the building is snowman. It looks like what they were doing out there on that given day. In the middle, again, focus on wellness. This was a board that was right up here at the North Gym, and that was Ms. Sidebottom here at the high school, focusing on yoga. She is a certified yoga instructor and really took charge of that, especially with our high school students, to focus on wellness through the activity of yoga, which you can see on the slide here, every Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. So ample opportunities for students to be involved, not only during the school day in activities such as yoga and mindfulness, but also after school is an extension opportunity as well for such activities like intramurals. Platform is a community resource that we've been using. It's really a technology piece that we built into the physical education program. It's a way for students to engage in physical activity, weightlifting strategies, for a computer-based program so that they can track their own progress as they move through that. Our phys ed teachers have been using that, as well as our athletic coaches. It's really been a nice resource. And what we found during the pandemic, especially last spring when we were shut down, is we need to be able to provide our students with resources that they can be physically active in and outside of school. And to be able to provide those resources is extremely important. And Platform has been one that we have used and continue to evaluate. Okay. So I spoke briefly about the standards change. So the new standards were developed this year from the New York State Department of Education. You may or may not have seen them. Information will be coming out shortly from my office to the community about those standards. But really, the focus has been on, the shift, or the shift in focus has been on wellness and that social-emotional learning. So the old standards were simply three standards: personal health and fitness, a safe and healthy environment, and resource management. Those standards have gone on to six standards, with, again, a focus on wellness and social-emotional learning. And that's really going to yield the conversation that Dr. Otto and I had today as well about that social-emotional learning, that mental health. And that is embodied in the new learning standards that we have for physical education across the state. It's also important to note that the standards that were It's also important to note that the standards that were developed are flexible in the sense that they need to fit the needs of learners within your own community. As we know, communities vary very, very much throughout Western New York, throughout the entire state. So depending on what resources school districts have, depending on the demographics of your school district, there's flexibility within those six anchor standards within the realm of physical education as we go through what our objectives are for K-12 PE. Okay, so just a little bit again about the standards. The focus is on that physical literacy, and I'll just read that definition for you, is defined as the ability to move with competence and confidence in a wide variety of physical activities in multiple environments that benefit the healthy development of the whole person. So we know that social emotional learning is so key to the development of the whole child, and that's really what is embodied in the new learning standards for physical education. These, again, have been developed and they were approved for this school year. So the implementation phase is what you see going through here. So in Fall 2020 to Fall 21 is really just the phase of raising awareness of the new physical education learning standards. I can tell you that Amherst is ahead of the game. Last fall in 2019, we actually had Dr. Clint C. Seymour from Canisius College come in and give a presentation. He's the New York State AFER president, which is our New York State Phys Ed organization. He's actually an Amherst student teacher way back when, but, so he's already worked with our staff on a professional development opportunity on these standards because we knew they were coming even before they were approved. So our staff is already a purist in what the standards are and how to implement them going forward. So we're kind of ahead of the game there because that is Fall 21. Build capacity within our programs and our teachers so that they have a full understanding of what that means. And when we talk about build capacity, that's provide resources for our teachers, right? What resources do they, do they need to be able to see through their curriculum from a K-12 perspective? Whether that be equipment, or facilities, or training PE, that's building that capacity within our physical educators. And then lastly, full implementation, which according to New York State Department of Ed really starts in 2023, but I can tell you that we're already doing this. So we're really two, three years ahead of where we need to be, but that's always ongoing. Again, these standards are brand new for, for 2020. Were just approved. So again, we should say Fall 2019, I should say, working with Dr. Seymour Feising from Canisius College, he's a great resource, a friend of mine, a friend of many within our, within our department, the president again of New York State AFER, and really a motivating factor, personally, you know, a change agent for the standard change in New York State. This year, we've been examining our current curriculum, trying to modify and adjust as we, as we move throughout our entire curriculum, try to align to what the new standards are. Over the summer months, we will be working on some curriculum development to make sure that those standards are aligned, but also to look at what units are we providing for students? Do we need to shift from things like team games to more wellness-related activities to meet the standards and meet the needs of our learners here across the district? So maybe it is more mindfulness and yoga and more leisure activities that kids can really engage in and feel part of their community. So by 2023, we will be in full implementation, but I would assume with our staff here and the hardworking individuals and kind of where we're at already, we will be in full implementation prior to year 2023, physical education. All right, health education, I'm going to call up Dr. Otto. She's going to talk, help me talk through a little bit more about the new positions that we're adding and the rationale. I don't know if that's about to stand over here, but we'll try. So health education, real quick, I just want to give you an update of this year, some things that we've been really focusing on and keeping, really narrowing our focus is this idea of health literacy and skills-based education, which is a shift from traditional health education that many of you may know, where it's really content-driven. Our focus this year, I should say for the last couple of years, but it's really been evident this year that there's a need for it, is skills-based education. So what is health literacy? Is defined as people's knowledge, motivation, competencies to access, understand, appraise, apply health information in order to make decisions in everyday life concerning healthcare, disease prevention, health promotion, and to improve quality of life. Really, that's the end goal through health education, is to improve that quality of life, but also to give information or give skills to students so that they can make those healthy lifestyle choices. So again, skill development is what we're really focusing on, providing students with skills versus just content. And those skills stem from things like analyzing different influences throughout your community, interpersonal communication, how we communicate with one another, and why would that be important as a, as a skill, right? We need to build that skill to communicate. Decision-making, so a great, a few great lessons today as we are going through our interview process for our, for our new candidates, and their goal or their objective was to provide a lesson on decision-making. So how do we, how do we relate that to a healthy lifestyle, or how do we relate that to the health education? So some teachers chose things like if you're in a situation where you're opposed with peer pressure, or drugs, or alcohol, having that skill of being able to make a wise decision and go through that process is more important than just knowing the content of what drugs and alcohol are. Okay, so that's, again, a good analogy of what skills-based education is for health goal-setting, practicing health-enhancing behaviors, and then lastly, advocacy. So then we shift our focus from traditional health education, just content-driven, to skills-based, build skills so that students can make wise choices if they're posed with healthy choices or things that they have to make a decision about, really, in life. All right. So I'm going to stop talking for a moment. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Otto.
So if you let me get my specs in a little bit, but I could sit up here. As far as the plan for mental health and health, it's really been an exciting collaboration because we really have a shared vision. There's a lot of redundancy, as you can imagine, with health and mental health and health, probably might overlap. So one of the really exciting things is that we had this shared vision and we were able to tell a few of skills, excuse me, gap analysis to see where are we covering things, where are we maybe not covering things as many as we want to, particularly from a mental health perspective, but then also looking at health generally, are we covering that with our youngest kids? So when we looked at the gap, and this is a long time coming, because even prior to Jeff coming on, we've been looking at this really since 2018, to try to figure out where are we really falling short, where we think we need to dive deeper into some of the mental health components. So as part of that gap analysis, we had teachers from various levels looking at curriculum, both in what they're doing in the classrooms and also across health and mental health, to try to see where are we covering things, where are we redundant because we're doing it in multiple places? And maybe it's plentiful redundancy and we need to have it repetitive, but are we using common language? So we started looking at that even a few years back. Some of that stemmed with the mental health mandate that came out in 2018, trying to see what we already have in place. And as Jeff pointed out, we have largely been ahead of the curve. We've had curriculum in place to support mental health and social emotional wellbeing for many years. And we also, when we looked at some of the research-based curricula that are out there, we were using a lot of the ones that were already recommended. So we're really looking at where do we want to add on, what things can be cut, and we're continuing to look at that. One of the exciting pieces is now we have the opportunity to have someone that is developing that tier one, because we have looked at MTSS, as you guys are aware, with tier one supports, tier two, and tier three supports. What we were finding is when it came to mental health, our skilled professionals, maybe we have our social workers, maybe we have psychologists, are the ones that are pushing into the classroom. Now, obviously, there's an advantage to that, they're skilled in mental health and we're having them push into that curriculum. But what it was doing is we're taking away from their ability to address those tier two and tier three needs, where they are our most skilled mental health professionals in the building. So we saw this health position as an opportunity to really look at tier one supports with scripted curricula that could be put in place, and then reinforced with tier two and tier three supports that our mental health professionals could add in place. And we looked at curricula we could use to do that. So it has to do with Aaron's Law, you could be talking, even the last time I was here, about a lot of the mandates that have come out with Aaron's Law, DASSA, our lifelines curriculum, we're just trying to find the best vehicle to make sure that our kids' needs are being met, and looking at those people and professionals that make the whole sense and putting those in place. So some of the curriculum that you guys are aware we've been using, we have been using HealthSmart as our health curriculum. So part of our gap analysis was looking at HealthSmart and where do we see it doing a really nice job, and what pieces do we think are missing? But we also looked at Second Step, which is a curriculum that's been used K to five. We looked at our lifelines curriculum, and that is now fifth grade in our middle school, and then Aaron's Law, which is K to eight. So we see the health teacher as being a proponent of a lot of these things at the tier one level, making sure all of our students are well-versed in recognizing risks, recognizing warning signs, and also knowing who the caring adults are in the building that can support them when it's beyond their scope, beyond their skill set. So we're excited that we're going to be able to use these health positions to support our students at the tier one level, more large scale, more wide-scale too.
Thank you, Dr. Otto. So again, we've been going through the process, through the interview process at least, and I can tell you that we have had a number of quality candidates that we are confident can take on the tasks that are associated with this position from not only a health education standpoint, but a mental health education standpoint as well. It's going to be a tremendous benefit for our students. We will have health education, and I think we're probably, from what I, from what I know from Western New York, the only district that will have health education from K to nine, really. So to me, it'll be no different for students to go from, you know, I'm going to physical education class today and one health education class, it's just, it's going to be the norm, and that's a great thing, because we're equipping our students with those skills, that skills-based education and health education, to make wise decisions and to be able to handle situations as they come up in life, that social emotional learning. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you for this. It's going to be a great benefit for our kids. It adds to my department a little bit in a very good way. So thank you once again. I think we've kind of talked about it all in there. All right, so we're going to move on to athletics, which has been a very fun yet challenging year for athletics in many ways, many changes all the time, but we're, we're plugging away, and you know, at the end of the day, we're providing great opportunities and experiences for our kids. So again, just kind of the goal or the objective of athletics is really that, to create good citizens, that whole child atmosphere, that whole child development, and also to create memories that'll last a lifetime, whether it be your, your senior night, Abate Games, the bus rides, you know, that's really what embodies in athletics, those memories that you have, that you take with you, that help you be, to become a better person, but also to have some memories and lasting friendships. Just a couple of pictures for you here, our girls' cash team, that's our merge team with Sweet Home and Clarence. We collaborate on this so that we can provide opportunities for our kids in the realm of girls' ice hockey. And then the picture to my right here is our cross-country team, a few of the boys and girls. They placed first in the CIC championships this year for cross-country, and then later in sectionals as well, and I'll, and I'll go through that. All right, so speaking of that, sectional championships, and I put on your desk a kind of a handout that has all of the individual and team awards as well that we've had so far throughout the fall and the winter seasons. Obviously, we're, we're just wrapping up the Fall Two this year, the high-risk sports that did not participate in the traditional fall season, but also the, the spring sports just got started as of yesterday. So we're, we're rolling right along, we're going to go right through the end of June. Field hockey was your Section Six, Class B champions this year, this past fall. We defeated William Zoe East in the championship game, number two seed coming in, and we knocked out number one, so Mr. Nagy had to end the game there as well. Cross-country, boys and girls, Class B champions. Again, great year for, for cross-country and field hockey. Basketball, recently coming off our winter season, Section Six, Class A2 champions, great season for them, 10 of 11 were seniors, so it was a great opportunity for them to go out on a high note. We're going to be rebuilding a little bit with losing 10 seniors, but I'm sure Coach Chetel has already got a plan in place for that. And then our unified program, and it's second-year Unified Bowling, which we approved last year, our second unified program, and I see probably more to come as the, as the future goes here, but we're also Section Champs in Section Six for Unified Bowling and Division Four, so they had a great season as well this past winter. Just some, we, we continue with our senior recognitions, again, creating those lasting memories. That's been extremely important this year, maybe more so than, than other, to have those connections with one another, connections with your coach, your teammates, just to have that social aspect to it. But we know it's so important for our families as well, that they can be around their kids and have those lasting memories. So we continue with all of our senior recognitions from our senior nights, here's just a few photos, volleyball on the far left, basketball in the middle, and then, uh, girls' basketball, excuse me, and boys' basketball on the far right. And then, just as of today, the week of June 12th, which is senior week, we are going to be hosting with the help of Captain's Club, a senior tiger tailgate, which is more or less of a picnic, just for our senior student athletes so that they can have some closure to their season, gather their awards, have a final last conversation with their coach, see their peers, obviously in a COVID-safe manner, but really low-key versus our traditional tiger gala, but a nice way to give closure to our senior athletes as they close out the school year and their, their final years here at high school. Our offerings that we offered this year, I'm not going to go through the, all of the offerings here, just to make the statement that we were able to fortunately offer majority of our sports this year in, during this, this pandemic, which has offered many challenges, so I'm very happy to say that we've been able to provide most opportunities for kids. Unfortunately, the sport of wrestling, as you know, is one that has been canceled, but we're doing all that we can to engage those kids through a program called OTAs, which was, which was approved months ago for an opportunity for students that did not have an opportunity to participate in that season, during that sport, that they can still engage with kids. And if you're not familiar with that, OTAs was, for organized team activities, and it was an opportunity for our coaches to engage their kids. So our wrestlers are involved in that, and they're able to stay connected and have an outlet and a place to go, a safe place to go with, with Coach Bauer, who's phenomenal, outstanding wrestling coach and teacher here at the high school. So again, these numbers that you see next to it are our participation numbers. I will tell you that our participation this year has been through the roof. We were buying more football helmets, more lacrosse helmets, you know, having to be very strategic with our resources that we had, but our numbers have been through the roof. And I really think it's a testament to the desire and the yearning for, to be involved and be connected with one another, and, and to be able to build those memories with one another within your middle school and high school years. And our modified, excuse me, these are our winter, winter sports offerings. Again, wrestling was not an option unfortunately this year. Scholar-athlete is a program that we report to, this is reported to New York State Public High School Athletics, also known as NISPA. Last year, 2019, 20, we were a school of excellence, so there's two categories as far as team scholar-athlete. And to become a team scholar-athlete, your team average has to be a 90% GPA or greater to be considered for that honor. So we were a school of excellence, and what that stands for is 75% of your teams across your entire athletics program had that 90% GPA or greater. I do have a goal, and we will reach it eventually, I promise, is to get to school of distinction, which is 100% of your teams had that 90% GPA or greater. So far this year, we're only missing two teams that have not hit the 90% GPA. So we're, and we're close, and I'll tell you, they were at like 86 and 88, so we're not too far off. So we're shooting for that school of distinction. Again, in your packet, I've listed all of the, the teams that have made that scholar-athlete, but they're also here on the board as well for Fall 2020, Winter, and Fall Two. Our college-bound student athletes, we did have our NLI National Letterman Tent Signing Ceremony this past November. We had three outstanding student athletes that are going on to play collegiate athletics. We had Ella Wonzar, she will be continuing her education and athletic career at Binghamton University, Division One Basketball. Emma Klein for girls' soccer, Division One at Syracuse University, and Krista Frankowski at Slippery Rock University for Division Two Lacrosse. Jack Lenz is also listed here as a, as a notable one. He was not, he did not make his decision by the NLI original signing date, but he will be going to run Division One cross-country and track at Cornell. So some really amazing work that's going on, and we have more to come. We actually have 13 currently additional student athletes that will be going to play at the collegiate level, which we'll be recognizing and honoring them on May 26th, right here in the South Gym, so that they have the opportunity, again, to create those lasting memories and moments with their families and their friends, to have a picture with a backdrop and be celebrated and honored with one another and their peers. That'll be on May 26th from 8:00 to 9:00 AM here in the South Gym, a nice large space that we can socially distance and keep it safe. Just some projects, you've probably seen the South Gym foyer here, we've done a wall rack. We've done a wall rack DK on AdHart. That was a collaboration through some of our student councils, but also our booster club, so we thank our groups there, different organizations that help kind of lift the Amherst pride, I'll call it, when we do these types of projects. This was a before and after photo. You can see it's quite the renovation change there with a simple wall rack, really. To my far left, the Amherst Tigers and Amherst Tiger softball. You'll see those on the backstop real soon, up that baseball and softball, as we're trying to spruce up those areas a little bit as well. Again, that kind of adds to that whole strategic plan of Amherst pride. We want our kids to be happy to call themselves an Amherst Tiger, and that starts with really the uniforms that are on their back, the way that their facilities look, the way that we make them feel a part and a part of this community here within the athletics program. Booster clubs, so the calendars, or the posters, I should call them, they're not necessarily calendars anymore. We've had, our schedules have changed sometimes every minute, every hour. So what we've been doing on our posters, putting a simple QR code, and that'll link you directly to our arbiter schedule, so as they change, they're updated and they're in real time. But we've been able to continue all of our posters, again, another way to recognize our student athletes. Those are selected by our coaches, really the leaders of their team. So for example, Solomon Kaneski with boys' soccer, Coach Denonzo chose Solomon to represent the boys' soccer team on the poster. The kids really get into it, they like that, just another nice way to recognize them. And then I told the booster club, I had a meeting last night, we were going round and round about different fundraisers, and you've probably seen this flyer, maybe see my email that I sent out about it, but we do have a fundraiser coming up. I told them I'd give a little plug to it here. Cash and Cornhole is their, really their only fundraiser of the year. We haven't had concession sales, we haven't had tiger cards, we haven't had all those traditional fundraising efforts that we typically do. So again, we have a fundraiser coming up for the booster club, which supports our student athletes, which ultimately supports our kids in many different ways on and off the athletic fields. Right? So part of that is, part of athletics, a good piece of that is really that our biggest strength is our people, our coaches, and how well-connected they are with kids. So it's important that we continually focus on coach development. In my time here, we've probably hired at least 20 to 25 coaches. It's not an easy job. It's a job that takes a lot of time, commitment, and dedication. We know they're not in it for the money. So we need to continue to develop and retain coaches in a positive way. And through that, there is a model, or a program, I should call it, called 3D Coaching. There is a video associated with this, I'm not going to get into it too much, but really it focuses on the body, the mind, and the spirit of coaching. It's not just about the physical, it's about connecting with kids, that SEL piece, the constant check-in with kids and making sure that they're doing okay and making sure that their needs are met. So that's really what 3D Coaching is all about. And along with that, we will be setting up a mentor program with some of our veteran coaches, for example, Joanna Files, who we all know and love, that coaches soccer, basketball, lacrosse, highly effective coach here in the district. She usually utilizes a mentor with many of our younger coaches to help keep them so that they not only want to stay here in Amherst, but help them develop as they go throughout their coaching career as well. And then to leave you here, this is just again, a little thank you. I have some student testimonials that the, I will say, the booster club has been working on this, so I'm stealing their idea a little bit here, but I thought it was relevant to the meeting tonight, just once again to say thank you for your support for athletics throughout the school year. I know that not every district had the full support that we had here in Amherst, so just wanted to say thank you, and I'll try these videos.
I'm Allison Widdit, and I'm a freshman here at Amherst High School. Thank you, Amherst Volleyball, for being what I look forward to at the end of a long day. Thank you for teaching me that to get better, you can't just push yourself until it hurts. You need to push yourself while it hurts. You taught me to lift up my teammates and to let them do the same for me. Thank you for being a part of my life that demanded my best every time I stepped onto the court. You taught me that being coachable is one of the greatest assets an athlete can have. I learned that attitude is just as important as ability and that positivity is a choice. Thank you for bringing people into my life who are not satisfied with mediocrity. Through you, I have learned what it is to have and to be a good teammate. You helped me find the good in the victories and the losses. You taught me to find out what kind of person my team needed and forced me to become her. As soon as my jersey's on, the rest of the world falls away. Thank you for being a place to be unapologetically myself.
Dear God, thank you for giving me the sweet relief of being able to relax after a long night at school. Thank you for teaching me honesty, even though it made the time break a lot. Thank you for telling me there will always be another chance. There's nothing better than feeling like getting to play such a relaxing, but sometimes frustrating day at the end of your school. Thank you, Coach Jones, for helping me get into this amazing game, a distraction from the work that my teachers may or may not have given me. Thank you.
One more.
Hi, my name is Ella Wonsor. I'm a senior, and I'd like to thank Amherst Women's Basketball for teaching me the valuable lessons of teamwork, friendship, hard work, and dedication, which have allowed me to play college basketball. Thank you so much, everyone who's helped me. It has been an honor to wear an Amherst jersey for the last five years, and I'm so thankful for all the things I've learned, which will allow me to succeed in college and in life. Thank you.
So to me, athletics is just a platform. It's that platform to build good people, and as you can see, we have some outstanding kids here in Amherst that are doing great things on and off the field. So again, thank you for your support.
Thank you for all your hard work and flexibility this year. You know, we've had many twists and turns, and there was a time in your life where I think you were pretty good at hitting curveballs, but this year, you've certainly had to hit a bunch of them as they come our way quite often. So thank you, Jeff, for your flexibility, putting the kids first, advocating for them, and turning things around sometimes in a weekend's time to get it going on time when decisions were made at the last minute. So thank, and not by us, but at the state level. So thank you for that.
Any questions?
All right. We will need a motion for new business items.
If you must then, for new business items, G1, A through Y, 2, B through E.
We have a second.
We have a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items, G1, A through Y, and 2, B through E, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries 7-0. With that, I'd like to congratulate some of our new team members that are joining us here at Amherst, I believe Ms. Mers and Ms. Duck. Welcome to our team. We look forward to having you. Do we have any follow-up action items? And we have no executive session, so we will need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a second.
We have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries 7-0. Thank you, everybody, for coming.